We have the forum, the only member of access is Mr. Steven Martinez. So with that, we will call this meeting to order. This is the Monday, March 18th, 2019, regularly scheduled board meeting for our trustees and Jasper, Huntington School District. First item, as always, is to please ask, please silence all devices. And with that, we'll jump right into everything else. With that, the pledge and prayer. So we pledge, Mr. Bur.
Well, I have a short announcement to go first. I did have two individuals that were coming, but my second individual were procured by the coaches and was taken to Huntington for a track meet. So we're gonna have Ms. Molly Sybold.
(Laughter).
So we'll do both pledges for us. Molly is the daughter of John and Mandy Sybold and is a sixth grader at Jasper Junior High School. She's a proud member of First United Methodist Church in Jasper and active in the early youth fellowship. She loves playing with her dog Molly, making slime, and I'm not sure if she makes a slime or Molly makes a slime, jumping on her trampoline. Molly plays flute in the band, plays fifth in oral reading at the UIL competition, and will be a junior dancer in the fall. She hopes to go to college SFA and become either an audiologist or a speech pathologist.
(Inaudible).
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How can the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Reverend Harden, would you be so kind as to lead us in person?
Remember by our head, our partner, Dr. We thank thee for another day, and we thank thee that thanks the world, where we sat there all, and as we come to make the decision for our children, may they be wise, may they be competent, may they be educational, and may we see growth within them. Now, we thank thee, Lord, that we're able to give an incentive to those who come and work hard and those who care. Bless us right now and take care of all our board members and give our president a big vision from high. And take care of Brother Hudson, if you will, Lord, and bless those that are here and have come to look us over. We say we'll do our best to glorify God's name. For it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Our next item will be our recognition of our believed recipients. Dr. Hudson?
We have two believed recipients. The first one, the first nominee is Mr. Ron Marshall from the technology department. The reason for the nomination, Mr. Marshall is a wealth of knowledge and know-how. He has on numerous times gone above the call of duty to find innovative out of the box things to resolve problems encountered by the technology team. Most recently, when a student broke a headphone earpiece in an iPad, he used a coffee stirrer and hot glue to dislodge the broken piece, saving the district an expensive out of and outside vendor repair. We offer Mr. Marshall a high five for his effort of thinking outside the traditional box, showing that if we believe, we can achieve. And he was nominated by Mr. Niko Hannon, the supervisor.
Come on up.
You gotta get your picture to him. Well, we'll give you this as a way. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Hold the pose. All right, we got you.
You stay up there, then, Mr. Marshall?
Yeah, they stay up there. Next, we have Ms. Becky Carter from Jasper High School. While she was nominated, Becky is an incredible asset to the Jasper High School Guidance Office and to our campus altogether. She is always friendly, professional, and hardworking. Becky goes out of her way to make our students, office workers feel welcome and important. She has put in countless extra hours and always does, and with an incredibly positive attitude. And this who she was nominated by is Melissa Barby.
All right, so don't hurt photos.
Are you young side this way? No, we all do. We'll look up to you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, our next item would be our forum, no one has signed up to speak, so we'll move right along. Our first action item, so to speak, will be our consent agenda. Does any member need any item pulled and moved for consideration? If not, we have a motion to accept. We have a motion by Mr. Tom Webb, second by Dr. Ben Kinnack. Any discussion? If none, all in favor of the consent agenda being approved as presented, show a right hand. Carry six zero. Thank you very much. Our next item will be to consider and, if appropriate, approve adoption of localized policy update 112. Ms. Coleman?
Yes. During the board trustees workshop, which was held on Monday, February 25th, a presentation and documentation was shared with the board trustees concerning localized policy update 112. And recommendation is the administration recommends that the board add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by TASB Policy Services and Localized Policy Manual Update 112.
We have a recommendation from the administration to approve the adoption of localized policy update 112. Do we have a motion?
No.
We have a motion by Mrs. Devon Martindale, second by Mr. Martin Duran. Any discussion?
I have just a couple of questions. On page 24, on the purchasing authority, I think I understand why the $50,000 express crew, $50,000 side. I mean, there was another one with $10,000 that did the same thing.
Yes, sir. I checked with Angela Balm and our TASB representative, and she said to respond to my question, there were two values that were in that paragraph in CBL. The first paragraph, which begins prior to advertising, is saying construction contracts at or above $50,000, the board has to decide how they're going to choose a company to do the construction. So that's for the advertising begins. Are you going to be doing a sealed proposed process or competitive bidding process? So that's prior to it. Now, the second paragraph speaks more to once you've decided on how to get a big company to do the work, then for contracts valued at or above $50,000, excuse me, $10,000, the board has to approve the contract.
Thank you. There was another one on page 54. It was on the authorized district officials. I think it was the very first paragraph authorized district officials include.
Communication GKA.
GKA. It just changed the wording, authorized district officials, and it had administrator at first, but the GKA.
Well, that will, I mean, it's just mine, but I was just wondering, because we took out administrators.
Yeah, it just says revisions to GKA local clarify that a district official will give a person refused entry to or ejected from property under the district's control. Read information, explain the right to appeal, and explain the relevant complaint timeline.
And I know that that's me, but I was just kind of wondering, on the authorized district officials, who's gonna assign that? Have you got the president to assign that?
No, it would be typically whoever does gym manager, so it's authorized district officials. So if they say include an administrator, but that when they say district official includes all, everyone that's involved in that, if we get to that particular one that we got to pass on to the district. Thank you.
A lot of work. Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion right, that's Dr. Martindale, second by Mr. Duran, to adopt, to approve the adoption of localized policy update 112. All in favor of the recommendation, show a right hand. All opposed, like, sign, there are none. It carries six zero. Our next business or action item will be to consider and, if appropriate, approve low attendance day waivers. Ms. Swolos?
Districts or campuses can request a waiver to excuse any instructional days from average daily attendance, ADA, and foundation school program, FSP. State funding calculations that have attendance of at least 10 percentage points below the last year's overall average attendance for the district or applicable campus due to weather, health, or safety issues. An application for low attendance day waiver must be submitted using the TEA's automated waiver application system, which is available in the online TIL secure environment. Our district must include the following information: documentation of the low attendance for the day and the prior year's attendance report showing the overall average. The documentation includes February 8th, 2018. A bomb threat was made at Parnell Elementary during the drop-off time, and students were evacuated to the Jasper Junior High School. The prior year attendance, 1718, on this day was 94.7% attendance, and then on the day 2019, it was 78.56% attendance. The administration plans for board to approve the low attendance waiver for February 8th, 2019.
We have a recommendation from the administration to approve the low attendance waiver for February 8th, 2019. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Dr. Ben Kinnack, second by Mr. Tom Webb. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor of the recommendation, show a right hand. All opposed, like, sign, there are none, and the motion carries six zero. Our next item will be to consider and, if appropriate, approve districts legislative priorities as submitted.
Board policy committee needs to say that the board provides input and feedback to the legislators, state board of education, and Texas Education Agency regarding proposed changes to ensure maximum effectiveness and benefits to the school children in the district. At the February 25th, 2019, board workshop, the Jasper I S D Board of Trustees developed legislative priorities for the 85th legislative session, I think it was 86.
Eighty-six.
It's 86. Yes, so at this time, administration recommends the board approve the district's legislative priorities as submitted.
We have a recommendation from the administration to approve the district's legislative priorities as submitted. Do we have a motion?
No.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Martindale, second by Mr. Tom Webb. Any discussion? If none.
I think it'll be great for public to hear what those goals are, because they are excellent, and I think they'd be proud of what we came up with.
So the legislative priorities are our mission, of course, the mission of Jasper is to provide an excellent education for all students. Our vision, the vision of Jasper I S D and partnership with parents and the community is to educate with compassion and dedication so that every child can be successful. The first one is school safety. Jasper I S D supports additional safety measures for school districts, including additional fund for more counselors, and supports staff to address the rising mental health concerns. Jasper I S D strives to meet the academic and socio-emotional needs of all students in the classroom, groups, and individual guidance lesson geared to reduce bullying, decrease aggressive behavior, as well as assisting students with pathways for their future. Providing for these needs will enable Jasper I S D to individually customize and meet the needs and interests of each student. Jasper I S D supports increased funding for security systems and provide additional and ongoing manpower to create an overall improved environment of safety. The second one is finance, public school funding. Jasper I S D supports measures to benefit students in the rural property poor school district. Jasper I S D supports pre-attendance for all students ages three and four to attend full day pre-K classes. Jasper I S D supports measures to move pre-K funding into the K-12 funding formula. Jasper I S D does not support unfunded mandates designed to pull resources from students. The third one is TRS healthcare. Jasper I S D supports measures to increase state funding of TRS active care and TRS care. Jasper I S D supports the full alignment of the TRS healthcare benefits with the ERS, which is the Employee Retirement System of Texas, healthcare benefit system for current and retired employees. The fourth one, accountability and assessment system. Jasper I S D supports an assessment system designed to measure a student's yearly academic growth. Jasper I S D supports state assessments that are aligned and tested at the appropriate lexile level for the students. Jasper I S D supports an assessment system that is growth oriented, taking into account students' special needs and does not affect their ability to complete graduation requirements. Jasper I S D supports measures reducing the number of tests administered at each grade level, up to and including the elimination of state assessments. Jasper I S D does not agree with the utilization of test scores for determining districts' rating, providing individual teachers with incentive pay nor determining district funding. Those are the priorities.
Is there a way we can put this on the website?
We will.
I would just like to reemphasize one comment of Dr. Hudson, and that is, at the February 25th workshop, this board created these, we worked spoon fed by Region 5, TEA, TASB, or ESBN. We did this all by ourselves, and I think it's, I think we've got some great priorities listed there, so it was good work by the board. Any other discussion? If none, all in favor of the recommendation, show a right hand. All opposed, like, sign, there are none. The motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. Our next item will be to consider and, if appropriate, approve installation of above-ground storage tanks and removal of underground storage tanks using petroleum solutions. Mr. Sybold?
In accordance with district policy CH local, any single budgeted purchase of goods or services that cost $50,000 or more shall require our board approval. Rationale for this is we have been fueling offsite for over five years and have to pay higher prices for fuel and have to drive each bus and white fleet vehicle offsite to refuel it, costing fuel, miles, and manpower to the district. We also pay a high insurance cost each year for the existing tank to be insured. Insurance premiums on the 34-year-old underground storage tank are $30,000 annually with a $500,000 or $1 million deductible. With the new above-ground storage tank system, the annual insurance is estimated to be between $2,000 and $3,000, but they only have $10,000 deductible. We will not be able to insure the underground storage tank much longer. We were only able to get one carrier this year, and environmental issues could become a problem as it deteriorates. Administration recommends approving installation of the above-ground storage tank and removal of the underground storage tanks using petroleum solutions and amending the general fund budget function, function 34, for $138,000.
We have a recommendation from administration to approve the installation of above-ground storage tanks, removal of the underground storage tanks by petroleum solutions, and amending the general fund budget function 34 for $138,000. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Dr. Ben Kinnack, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Martindale. Any discussion?
Question, and we're presenting, by all means, I'm in favor of this, but my question is, is, and I'm gonna ask this on several others, is when, why are we, and I asked this, and not to get an answer at the workshop, amending and coming out of fund balance, and you look at our, we're six months in, so 50% to our budget, and on transportation, which is a transportation cost, we've only spent 37%, and I think from 365,000. And we budgeted 988,000 annually, we only spent 730,000. That's gonna give us $258,000 left in transportation at the end of the year. We've only got three months in our capable main that is left for transportation, and our main thing is transporting children. So why are we doing that? It's huge, our budget, and really our numbers at the end of the year, when we've got the money already that we've allocated in transportation, let's take that 138 out of the budget line.
Well, typically, what that will happen, we just, just on the precautionary side, to be on the safe side, to make sure we don't have any, I guess you'd say, unforeseen circumstances that come up, because this was not a budget item. So we ask for it to come out of fund balance. Even though at the end of the year, we are able to absorb this in our current budget, then it will come out of current budget.
And I understand what you're saying, but I totally, in all due respect, would disagree, because when we've got, when we're gonna have $258,000, I mean, even the buses, that's fixing to come up later, we could buy both of those items out of transportation and still the other that line item budget. So you know, in that line item budget, we're not saying A, B, C, D, N, those, getting that. I mean, we've got the money, and like I said, if I'm getting supportive of doing it, but why get it out of fund balance? Because all we're doing is transferring money at the end of the year. And we're, we're gonna be, you know, $2 million, or 1.7 million of the good at the end of the year if we take our budget file out. So why, you know, I don't understand why we're doing that. I mean, there's two or three items that we've got, money in those line items already, that we do not have to take out fund balance. So I would make, make a amendment to the motion to, to purchase the tanks, purchase out of line, the money that's already in the budget, out of that.
What do we do, what do we do at the end of the school year to leave those funds gone?
What we're gonna have, I mean, I don't foresee.
We don't, I don't either, but we can't say what we're gonna have in three more months.
Well, I think that this is looking at our budget, you look at the instruction area, we're gonna be a million dollars above in instruction, and we have moved that money from instruction to other areas in our budget this year to pay for other costs. And so there is ways to move, as we came into, an item that's older than our budget, that's gonna have to come to the board anyway, and that would have to come through fund balance there.
So your suggestion is that this 138 come out of transportation line item?
Yes, sir, because we have, we budgeted 988,000 in transportation. As of the end of February, which is six months to our budget, we've only spent 37%. So we're 13% under budget, we only spent 360, round it out to 365, and you multiply that times two, that's only 730 that we're gonna spend for the year, and we've only got three months left in the school year, and the majority of that money is spent on transporting children. And that's why I make that motion to amend that.
We have, we have a motion to amend by Mr. Duran, second by Ms. Stewart.
At the end of the day, if we end up with a shortfall, doing it the way Mr. Duran suggests, comes out of fund balance anyway. So it's all, it's all coming out of the same pot.
If we don't use it, it's gonna go in fund balance.
Yeah, and if we do use it, then it comes out of fund balance.
It's all the same money.
It's just booked, you're paying.
Yeah, that's all it is, that's what it doesn't matter.
Forward standpoint, like, if you're using the money that you budgeted for, it looks like you're being, you've really been more successful in utilizing your budget, where if you come up at the end of the year and you made that amendment, the budget can tell how much you actually put in there. I mean, we could say we're gonna put $2 million, when really, we took another $500,000 out of fund balance.
But we're not using money we've already budgeted. That's the point.
We will.
We haven't budgeted for these taxes.
But it all comes in of transportation.
And you said, you made reference to the fact we would be using money we've already budgeted. We have not budgeted this.
No, he's saying we would use the, over, that he's forecasting out of the transportation budget. So he wants to include it as an amendment to the current budget and not include the part about taking the money out of fund balance. So, but at the end of the day, the money, if we end up with a shortfall, it comes out of fund balance anyway.
It does make your reports more accurate.
It looks more like you've got a total balanced budget.
But even, even if we say that it's gonna come out of fund balance, we're gonna use that money first, and that's just a precautionary measure. So we use that money first, that was equivalent to we utilized what we did in the energy management program with ideal cap. We set out of fund balance the $458,000, that actually came out of our budget. So we actually need to pull it out of fund balance, because we actually absorb that from our current budget. So we were saying that we don't anticipate to be, come up short, but we just do that as a cushion, just in case if we actually already have an amendment in order.
So if we eliminate the language, if we eliminate the language that the funding comes from fund balance, from this motion, and in August, when we're reconciling everything and we realize that we came up with a shortfall, then we would just have to pass another amendment that says it's not gonna come out of fund balance. So it doesn't really matter.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, just it comes out more, like Mark says, it's coming out to where you've got more of an alignment with your budget, so it's fine.
And to me, it is, is from the point where we budgeted, each year, we're creating, we're saying we're creating more and more in fund balance, where Ms. Ford, I think it'd be easier, because she is projecting on, on the actual budget, not on actual cost. And so that is why we're eight to nine percent ahead of budget now, instead of, we were at actual cost, which only be, you know, two and a half, one and a half to two percent.
So we have an amended motion that, to approve the installation of above-ground storage tanks and removal of underground storage tanks using petroleum solutions. The amendment being the deletion of, amendment of the general fund budget function 34 for $138,000. We have a motion second. Any other discussion? If none, all in favor, show a right hand. Opposed, like, sign, there are none. So the installation of above-ground tanks, removal of underground tanks, petroleum solutions is passed. Six zero.
Do we have an estimated start date, or like a summer project?
No, we, that was.
We'll be able to work around that.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, we'll just pipe off one exit. It'd be done tomorrow.
We're trying to get down to as soon as possible. Okay, our next item will be to consider and, if appropriate, approve the purchase of two new regular route buses. Mr. Sybold?
In accordance with district policy CH local, any single budgeted purchase of goods or services that cost $50,000 or more shall require our board approval. We have purchased two new regular route buses since we received 10 from the 2012 bond. We have some refurbished some. Two new regular route buses will provide a much-needed update to our yellow fleet and give us more flexibility in our extracurricular needs. Administration recommends approving the purchase of two new regular route buses from Thomas Bus Gulf Coast and amending the general fund budget function 34 by $220,000 to cover anticipated costs.
We have a recommendation from administration to approve the purchase of two new regular route buses and to amend the budget, general fund budget function 34 by $220,000 to cover anticipated costs. Do we have a motion? No. Second. The motion by Mr. Duran, second by Dr. Ben Kinnick, any discussion?
I would allow Mr. Saba to do it, with seat belts.
Yes.
This is with seat belts, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Using with seat belts.
And did we verify that, that's not gonna affect our buses without the school buses? You know, we talked about that.
Yeah, it doesn't, because they're grandfathering, because a certain year.
It's once it's purchased, once it's manufactured after September seventeen, it's required of seat belts, so all.
The most districts, some districts have the flexibility of doing resolutions, which we gave the board an optional of doing resolutions, so you wouldn't have to do for the anticipated costs if they choose to put seat belts on the rest of the buses.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If none, I'll favor show right hand, all opposed, like, sign if we're none, so the motion carries its percentage, six zero, thank you. Our next item will be to consider, and if appropriate, approve the purchase and installation of a new banned observation tower. Mr. Saba?
Our banned observation tower had to be removed several years ago for safety reasons and has not been replaced. There is a need for a banned observation tower for proper spacing and alignment during marching practice to get them ready for contests. Administration recommends approving the purchase and installation of a banned observation tower from Melhart, amending the general fund budget function thirty-six for twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to cover the costs.
We have a recommendation from administration to approve the purchase and installation of a banned observation tower from Melhart, and amend the general fund budget function thirty-six for twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to cover the costs. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Webb, the second by Ms. Martindale, any discussion?
I know, I emailed Dr. Hudson about life ability was not happening, so fencing around that, I know you responded back to that.
Yeah, the, the, I've seen this actual tower, very secure, so there's a lot of things, of course, there's signage that we have, and of course, inform the, the insurance company, we had said we'd go out and look to make sure it's covered with the insurance company. As we put on this, as long as we followed the manufacturer's instructions in, in putting it up, a fortune for us, it would be the company who would be starting this well. So, we just need to know exactly where Mr. Matthews wants, okay, on the hardest.
And we'll be with the fire marshal, make sure that the power lines, that did it the correct distance and all that, and then give it to Mr. Matthews, and give him options, and let him pick where he wants to go.
I just think, I know this is a, my name, point, twenty-six foot high, high, wise, Mr. Matthews retires in twenty years, that next one's gonna be afraid of heights.
Well, I guess.
That's what it needs to be for U I L. That's, that's the level that the U I L judges are looking at it, so it has to be that tall.
There is a, there is a middle story that's not quite as high, if it, if it's.
That's usually where we put our, our drum majors.
One other, any other discussion?
Yeah, my comment on this one, and one of those that we discussed, discussed before COVID, looking at the budget again, Dr. Hudson and Saba, is I'm sure this was coming out of extracurricular activities being banned, and when you look at that, it's a twenty-six thousand dollar cost, and we've only spent forty-two percent, so we're eight percent below that. Again, is, would make an amendment to that.
You say, the building would be a maintenance.
It'd be a maintenance.
Yeah.
But we still have that there, to make a amendment to that, that we would take, instead of making amendments that are taken out of fund balance, it was taken out of the, putting it into the maintenance section. So, we're forty-five percent there, and with a one-point-five million dollar budget, it leaves us with a good amount left there.
So, like, we have a planned maintenance in operation?
Yes, maintenance budget, we covered that.
Okay, just, this says extracurricular activities, thirty-six function.
No, is that what we did?
Yeah.
What's thirty-six?
Six function, thirty-six.
So, that, that being.
Normally, maintenance would pay for, since it's.
You know, beginning of last quarter of school year, I know our activity, I know we still got some soccer and baseball, and softball, and things like that, but, you know, there should be, looking at the past historical, there's money left from there, is, would make an amendment to that motion that we paid out, and we put out, going into the fund balance, it's paid out of thirty-six.
That's second.
We have a motion to amend by Mr. Duran, second by Ms. Stewart, to approve purchase and installation of the new banned observation tower and to fund it out of the current budget.
Yes, sir.
What for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Hudson, I heard a little bit of what you were, you know, you and Mark were talking about fencing, but I didn't, I wasn't clear about this safety issue.
Yeah.
Small children attempting to climb this thing, you know, we talked in our workshop about some kind of barrier.
There actually is a barrier when you, in order to, you have a lock on it, so you can't actually get to the stairwell without having a key to get inside it.
So, the, where this fencing is, well, a small child.
No, that's not even, that's not even the, if we put additional fencing, it'd be something totally different. I'm just talking about, it's gonna show, it's a gate.
There's a cage.
It goes on there, so you can't, you can't get into.
Yes, and what I wanted to know is, in the picture we have, it looks like a small child could even possibly squeeze through.
Oh, they can't, it would, it would have to be something that they would have to crawl over, and sometimes the space won't allow you to do that. Plus, we'll have a lot of signs on the outside acknowledging the fact that, you know, this is, you know, entered in.
Well, and then we talked about the workshop, that we never got any, any feedback on it, so just wanna make sure of that.
Any other discussion as to the amendment? If none, I'll favor the amendment as presented, show a right hand, all opposed, like, sign if we're none, that carries six zero, so the, the motion to approve, the amended motion to approve the purchase and installation of the new banned observation tower to be funded out of the current budget is approved, six zero, thank you. Our next item will be to consider, and if appropriate, approve contracting with flat lung services to maintain G I S the grounds.
We're gonna actually cool down.
Our next item will be to consider, and if appropriate, approve consolidated articulation agreement with Lamar Institute of Technology, Burkeville I S D, Jasper I S D, Kirbyville C I S D, Newton I S D, Spurgar I S D, and Woodville I S D, to create a dual credit opportunity for all districts. Ms. Jost.
Good afternoon. Under board policy, local board, legal board policy, D N C, for any educational partnership between a district and a community college district, an agreement must be approved by the board or company of both the district and the college district. Lamar Institute of Technology, L I T, currently offers dual credit courses for districts who meet qualifications for concurrent enrollment. J I S D does not currently have an M O U with L I T to provide services for J I S D students who benefit from enrollment in dual credit and career tech courses. Per the M O U attached, L I T will allow our students to enroll and complete courses online via face-to-face and/or via Zoom at either Jasper High School, the Higher Education Technology Center at Jasper, and/or at L I T in Beaumont. The M O U will allow our students to, one, complete basic courses within the Core Core D, two, complete C T E courses toward C T E certifications, three, complete academic associate degrees, four, complete an associate degree with C T E certifications, or five, complete courses that will articulate to S F A or another four-year degree. The dual credit option creates opportunities for students to find and complete courses designated as their college and career pathways. Core courses are available and not limited if the course has enough enrollment for the college to continue offering the course. Currently, L I T is offering tuition rates of fifty dollars per semester credit hour, plus the cost of textbooks for core courses taught at Jasper High, the Higher Education Technology Center, and/or via Zoom. Online courses require a classroom at Jasper High or the Higher Ed Center with a proctor, which may be a paraprofessional paid by J I S D, and the cost is two forty-nine plus textbooks. All other fees, including books, are the sole responsibility of the student. The attached M O U from L I T includes legislative language requirements. Additionally, the M O U for L I T includes the five other school districts in partnership to ensure college and career readiness for each district's respective students.
We have a recommend, oh, I'm sorry.
Administration recommends adoption of the M O U with L I T, Burkeville, Jasper, Kirbyville C I S D, Newton, Spurgar, Spurgar, Woodville I S D, to provide dual credit opportunities for all six districts.
Now, we have a recommendation from the administration to adopt the M O U with Lamar Institute of Technology, Burkeville I S D, Jasper I S D, Kirbyville C I S D, Newton I S D, Spurgar I S D, Woodville I S D, to provide dual credit opportunities for all six districts. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Kinnick, second by Ms. Webb, any discussion?
Lots of questions about this one.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at these districts that are all there, what kind of contract do we have that they're going to, since if they're gonna be able to take advantage of this, what kind of contract do we have with them to help with expenses?
Currently, all of the, their, the contract for expenses will be going through the Jasper Higher Ed, Found and Technology Foundation Board, which who, that's who owns and operates the center. So, they will have similar contracts with L I T for the operation of the center. So, the operation and the costs are L I T and the foundation.
So, we'll add, meaning we don't know what all that's gonna consist of yet?
Not yet.
So, we're making, we're trying to approve something that we don't have all ducks in a row yet?
Well, we do have ducks in a row. This is for our students to be, for us to be able to register and enroll our students, similarly with what we did with S F A. So, the agreement is for our students to be able to take courses at low cost. This mimics the same agreement that we have with S F A. We can do that on our campus. This is almost identical to the one for S F A. On our campus, at the Higher Ed Center, and through, it offers a low-cost option for our students. The, the expenses for the center are a completely separate issue for this component.
I was confused, since all of that's listed on our item to be voted on tonight. I mean, it's just.
And I question also the partnership. It makes reference to us being in a partnership with these other districts, but to my knowledge, this board's never seen any kind of agreement or partnership with any other districts. And I would think, before entering into a contract with a partnership that we don't even know exists, we need to see that partnership agreement first. We don't know anything, I mean, you mentioned that you were meeting with some districts.
Yeah, it's really just talking about doing this in the best interest, so, you know, we understand that resources are scarce in this particular area, so we're trying to pull our resources together to provide dual credit and C T E opportunities that some places can offer, and by consolidating, let's bring it together, so we can reduce costs by having one or two professors, instead of having six for each individual campus. So, in the discussion, each one of the superintendents, there were several others that were invited to this, because we looked at a thirty mile radius around the Higher Education Center, and to see what we can do, because we're trying to create a model. There are models that are out there like this, we want to find a model that we can provide dual credit opportunity, and also some C T E coursework, that would give our kids a great opportunity.
Well, and I understand that, but I still don't understand, what is our obligation? What is Woodville's obligation? What is the other districts that are?
We actually, some people will actually do individual M O Us, but my preference that because we said it was gonna be a partnership, that we all signed the same.
What can we say, what we signed in this partnership?
Yeah, this is the actual M O U.
This would be the partnership agreement.
Yeah, this is the partnership agreement. That's just what we, we get from L I T and Stephen Paulson.
So, who's gonna pay for these paraprofessionals you mentioned here?
No, no, that's, that's if we do it on our campus. That's just talking about if we do it, now, for instance, if Woodville is doing dual credit on their particular campus, then they will have to provide a paraprofessional for that. It will say Woodville for their, but for Jasper, if we were gonna have, like, for instance, there are kids gonna take coursework at the, at the center, and then there may be kids taking coursework at the campus. And if we are actually utilizing a proctor, then we have to provide that, which we, we do that already. It's not asking, it's not taking any additional staff, and we do that already.
So, currently, what we have, our students are all taking their dual credit classes over at the center. Angelina, five, maybe six weeks ago, began providing a proctor for those classes that were online, or virtual classes. This, the goal of this agreement is to have face-to-face classes. That's why it was necessary to reach out to the other districts, because they're having similar issues. They have four or five students who need to enroll in a class. We have four or five students, and when you're spread out like that, the only viable and financially reasonable option for a college is to do it online, or do it via Zoom, but we know that that's not in the best interest of our students. So, by all of us collaborating together, we're able to pool resources. If Woodville brings four students, and Jasper has five students, and Burkeville brings four students, we've made a class, and they, and L I T provides a face-to-face teacher for our students, then we don't need a proctor, because then we'll have a teacher teaching the class, and you eliminate the need for.
So, who's gonna maintain the facility and the cost of that facility?
The cost of the.
It's not ours.
The cost of the facility is not ours. That's what L I T and the Higher Ed Board are in negotiation about right now, because L I T would be collecting their tuition and fees, and that's money that they would be using to offset costs at the center. Very similar to the way Angelina did it, except for the fact that with the agreement for multiple districts to come together, we increase enrollment, even though we have a lower cost for our students to take classes, the increased enrollment will help to offset the cost that L I T is going to incur by having the classes face-to-face at the center.
So, are you saying the tuition is going to pay for the?
That's what they, that's what they're negotiating about right now, is how much of the tuition goes to utilities and all of those kinds of things. Yes, ma'am.
Should we wait till negotiations are, are complete before we make this decision?
Well, the decision, I would say, my recommendation would be no, and it's because we need to have a plan in place for students to be able to take dual credit classes next year. We're currently in choice and registration time. If we continue to put this off, then L I T will not be able to meet their deadlines with the Higher Ed Board, the State Board of Education, to provide the information they need to, to then bring resources off their, their site. They have reports and requests that they have to get approval for as well. So, our timeline, the reason we're bringing this timeline right now, all districts listed here are presenting the same M O U to their school boards, either this week or next week.
Ms. Jost.
Yes, sir.
The one, the few questions I have, one, this is a, a M O U for five years.
That's their standard M O U. However, it does allow us to opt out of it, if we choose to opt out, and it's not, it's not a non-compete, and they are partnering with S F A, so we, our students can go where they, their needs are best suited, whether it's L I T or S F A, and as a school board, if you want to rescind the contract, we rescind it, and we send a notification that we're doing so at the time that you decide to rescind it.
And that's when I, when I look at it, I'm five years, I was wondering if legal reviewed the M O U. Because when you've got seven partners, such as L I T and six school districts, has legal reviewed that?
It has been reviewed and reviewed.
By legal?
No, we haven't, sent it to our legal department.
Seven partners is, you're really frightening. I mean, we're all working for the same goal, and I, I mean, this is great, that we're doing this, but, you know, when you've got that many partners in there, is someone pulls out, and you're just saying, we can pull out next year, and that leaves four, and then, or five, and you got another one, and all of a sudden, L I T, they're, they've got this.
But if we pull out.
But if we pull out.
Yeah, I don't think it will affect our students and ability to provide dual-credit for our students.
And then the other, we'll get the plans.
For clarification purposes, we're talking about partnership. We're talking about, I'm going to make sure I've got my brain around this. You've got LIT in the middle, and then you've got all these districts that are making an agreement with LIT. We don't have any obligation to these other districts. This is just all these districts making a partnership with LIT. That's the common link. And LIT and the Higher Education Foundation are providing financing and support for the facility. So all we're doing is saying, we want to do this thing. It doesn't have anything to do with Newton or Spurger or Woodville or anybody. It's just this, we drafted, we, these superintendents got together and said, this will benefit our district if we go together so that LIT would have more of a vested interest in coming to do this. So that's, that's the partnership. It's like a, I don't know, one of those goofy 70s sculptures with the ball in the middle and all the little balls come out.
Talking about our year earlier.
You know what I'm talking about, though.
Is, is there a, is there a minimum enrollment requirement for JISD?
There is not a minimum requirement for any district. However, for a face-to-face class, there is a minimum enrollment of nine students, regardless of what districts they're coming from.
Now, that's face-to-face with an LIT, with an LIT instructor or with an ISD instructor?
Our students can enroll in and get credit for classes online if we have one student. But for face-to-face, LIT providing face-to-face instructors, we must have nine students, and that's why that is beneficial to spread the love and let the others learn. We also keep our ADA. We don't lose any ADA regardless of, like with Woodville, it's to provide a teacher for a particular class, and our students are participating in that, we keep our ADA as well. Did I answer all the questions?
Yeah, we asked you on here, is, I read something there was 10 students in that. So this LIT is going to offer CTE courses, right?
That's correct.
Do you know what CTE courses they offer?
Welding, nursing, cyber technology, if we get the cyber technology grant that we applied for.
Cyber.
The workforce.
Sorry, what? When we get the grant?
Right now, there was, we got all those, the superintendents together, there was all these possibilities, and but we figured that we start with small, and if we grow it, then we can start expanding on the building center. We just feel like the most important thing would be the building, the nursing, and then this because of bringing in cyber, cybersecurity.
How did that, how did that affect our welding program that we currently have in CTE?
It won't. It won't because we're probably using like a teacher right now to be one of the students over there, so.
The biggest benefit to that is that now our students will get dual-credit for it. Where in the past, they could get a welding certificate, but it's just a high school, I mean, it's a welding certificate that's honored by, you know, the workforce, but they don't get any college credit for it, and now they will get CTE credit for it as well.
And again, the ultimate goal is that we will eventually have kids graduate with their associate degree, and they will actually have articulation agreement with Stephen of Austin, so they can actually go straight to Stephen of Austin.
And just for clarification sake, for without an articulation agreement, if all the school districts say, well, let's just wait, let's just wait and see what everybody else does and look at this tomorrow, LIT has no reason to move forward if they don't have an agreement in place.
That's right. They will not move forward without an articulation, without the.
Right. So with, looking at the, I know it said our, our teachers can teach some of these classes? So with AP class, I guess with those teachers, I guess they have to, they have to get LIT qualification in order to teach. Do we have that amount of teachers available that can do that?
We have a couple.
We have quite a few teachers who have applied to do some of these classes and some that we didn't have those qualifications. They've been hiding those from us. So we have, we have one that she's in the final stages of being approved to teach the cyber technology class. So, I mean, that's big kudos for JISC because other districts are really struggling to find teachers.
And we also have, I would say, Wednesday job fair, Stephen of Austin. April 2nd. So Stephen of Austin, they actually did a long view, they did a job fair some months ago.
At their job fair?
Job fair, and it was very successful. So we're actually going to do one here in Jasper at the center on April 2nd because there are people out there who currently can't teach dual-credit courses that we're not aware of, and they will hire these individuals, which give us a better opportunity to have face-to-face. That's, that's my main objective is to make sure our kids get face-to-face with their policy instruction.
Let me ask you this, now we've got to get to the funding part.
Okay.
So, so the parents or guardians or whoever are going to pay for the tuition?
Yes.
So books?
Yes.
That comes on my ISD.
No, it's still on, no, it says that, it says that it will be.
It says it's on the kids.
It says it's on the kids. Yeah.
There was something in here that said that the.
It says all other fees, including books, are the sole responsibility of the student. It's the last one on page 82.
Well, on this, it says, online courses require classroom to Jasper High with their proctor, which may be a paraprofessional paid by JISD and cost $249 plus textbook.
That's the cost to the student.
That's, all of those are costs to the student. Because JISC currently pays nothing toward any dual-credit classes.
Well, this is, it says paid by JISC.
That's why that's question.
I think the other, that's just.
The proctor's paying up.
In parentheses.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, limited to the proctor.
Yep.
What page are you looking at?
It's on page eight.
Looking at.
I'm actually looking at SFA. There's same thing on.
On a number of, so we got four, on a number of, number six there, Ms. Jocelyn, that says enrollment is 10, that's what you were talking about, the nine on that one?
Yes, we had a conversation with LIT, and based on the costs and them being able to keep those costs down, they've said nine is a good number for them, 10 is optimal, eight they can make happen, but nine is a comfortable number for them. 10 is where they really hit that break-even point and are more comfortable. So their standard agreement says, Tina, but they have many classes that make with 89.
And this is where I read section 11. On line 11, textbooks and instruction supplies, responsibility of ISD supply students with textbooks currently adopted by LIT and basic instruction supplies, purchase, store, maintain textbooks used in dual, dual and rolling courses. That's on page nine and three. That's what I read that. On number 11? Page nine and three, 10 on that.
I think that's a backhanded way of saying they're not going to be responsible for it.
And we just articulated in our language that we were.
That we have.
We can have that, we can have that, I mean, that because of, you know, to make the clarification because of, everything is on the students.
But it's small things like that, that as a board, I think we would be glad to have an attorney at least review this to make sure that we don't end up liable for signing a contract that isn't in our best interest.
We can, I mean, that part can be, we can make the motion to have that, to have that adjusted to re-correct the way it's supposed to.
Well, I believe it's addressed, if you go down to, I don't see, says maybe required, students may be required to provide additional materials and then et cetera. Covers some of those things, but if we don't want to say that.
Well, is there some reason we wouldn't have an attorney review this?
No.
Well, I'd make a motion that we have an attorney review this before we consider adoption of it.
Well, caution, if we, I mean, we can actually approve and have the, if everything's filed via the attorney, because, you know, we won't, we don't want to hold the process because what's going to end up happening is that we can lose this opportunity.
Let's approve it pending. Can we amend it to say approved pending attorney?
Attorney.
Bless approval.
And I would. Okay.
And scratch out that part where JISC will be responsible, law and books.
Okay, so section 11 is the one that's rolling?
Yes. Yeah, because that, that actually, they're right. It actually does contradict what it says in the recommendation.
Section 12 talks about, you know, that, you know, once it's signed, it can be amended and written or written on the board, so we can amend it at any time.
So we're amending the, the motion as presented with the additional language pending legal approval.
Where the legal would be.
Any questions? If none, all in favor, show a right hand. All opposed, like sign, there are none, so we carry six zero. Our next item will be to consider, if appropriate, approved continuation of articulation agreement with SFA. Ms. Jocelyn?
Under board policy, GNC legal, for any educational partnership between a district and community college district, an agreement must be approved by the board or designated for both the district and the college district. Stephen of Austin University currently offers dual-credit courses for district junior and senior students who need the qualification for concurrent enrollment. JISC does not have a, does not currently have an MOU to provide services for JISC students who would benefit from enrollment in dual-credit courses. Per the MOU attached, SFA will allow our students to enroll and complete courses online via face-to-face and/or Zoom at either Jasper High School or at the SFA location in Natchitoches. The MOU will allow our students opportunity to achieve up to 45 hours of academic credit. The dual-credit option creates opportunities for students to find and complete courses designated as their college and career pathways. Core courses are available and not limited. If the course has enough enrollment for the college to continue offering the course. Currently, SFA has offered a waiting of the $50 application fee, tuition rates of $150 per course based on free credit hours, plus the cost of textbooks for courses taught at Jasper High and for via Zoom. Online courses require classroom at Jasper High School with a proctor, which may be a paraprofessional paid by JISC, and the cost $249 plus textbook rollover fees, including books, are the sole responsibility of the student. The attached MOU from SFA has been approved, updated to reflect legislative language requirements. At this time, administration recommends the approval of the, of the adoption of the MOU with SFA.
Do we have a recommendation from administration to approve the adoption of MOU that Stephen of Austin University could do with credit? Do we have a motion?
Someone?
Do we have a second? A motion by Dr. K. Mack, second, Mr. Powell, do you have any discussion?
Ms. Jocelyn, Dr. Shannon headed up, could be a part of this.
The person actually headed up is Dr. Janet Tarola.
I just want to make sure, because he's on my board, I'm allowed, I want to do a conflict?
No, Dr. Janet Tarola and Dr. Stephen Westford, the interim president, that's a pair of two.
Dr. Shannon.
Any other discussion?
I have one question. Do they not, do they not, so the, the SFA courses are offered online rather than high school, they don't participate at the Higher Education Center?
So the articulation agreement that SFA and LIT are working on puts LIT as the primary teaching facility for the classes. SFA currently does not commit bringing face-to-face classes, which is what would be done at the center. We can do Zoom if after LIT and the Higher Ed Board get everything worked out. They are not opposed to any Zoom classes through SFA meeting over at the Higher Ed Center, but at this time, since that agreement has not worked out, we could, location, we can switch off.
Okay, that was my question.
Any other discussion? If none, all in favor of the recommendation as presented, show a right hand. All opposed, like sign, there are none, so we carry six zero. Thank you. Our next item will be to consider, if appropriate, approved grant agreement from Temple Foundation. Ms. Jocelyn?
The district will be receiving a grant from TLL Temple Foundation to assist in paying for two support consultants who are working in a capacity building and school design and development with the Higher Ed and Technology Center at Jasper. The anticipated donation is $50,000 for research, planning, and development of dual-credit, the dual-credit program. Grant period is February 1, 2019, to January 31, 2020. Attached is a copy of the letter of interest proposal submitted to the Temple Foundation on 2/25/19. Grant will be accounted for in the 199 fund, general fund, which will require an amendment to the 1819 budget for recording purposes. Administration recommends approval of the donation from the TLL Temple Foundation and budget amendment 19-08 for recording revenue and appropriation of anticipated expenditures for the grant.
We have a recommendation from administration for the approval of the donation from the TLL Temple Foundation and for the budget amendment 19-08 for recording revenue and appropriation for anticipated expenditures for the grant. Do we have a motion?
Silent.
Do we have a motion by Ms. Martin?
Second.
Second by Dr. K. Mack. Any discussion?
This is where I didn't understand how this tied in to the other. You know, the one that started off up here at the beginning, pre-implementation, the Higher Education Tech Center at Jasper, and then they're doing a capacity building, that would like, that's why I didn't.
Yeah, they're pretty much, the Temple Foundation is supporting this, this endeavor because they support all the school districts that are in this, and so there were actually a partnership and one, we think we have two very skilled consultants who've actually worked to level it there, they were the original early college in the valley, and so they have the weapon, and so they give us, people actually help us put this all together because we don't have the manpower to do all this stuff, stuff there, doing all this stuff to, to help us get it off the ground and make it sustainable. So we're very fortunate that the Temple Foundation, and they have to, they can't pay them directly, so they have to pay the school district, and we pay them, but that's why the donation is that way.
Well, this, well, this is just a one-year grant or?
This is a one-year planning grant, and it's to ensure that now that the board has approved that we want to move forward with partnership with LIT, now it's to get into the weeds and make sure that everything is worked out so that all six districts can do sustainable with the program and that our students get the best benefit. Everything, helping to write additional grants, all the different planning and research pieces that need to go into it.
Because I know with the Temple Grant, they're, you know, very good, they usually want you to be self-sustaining after one to two years, so there's not going to be any of that additional cost after they do this. It's over.
But when this grant is over, then our two consultants are off.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion from Ms. Farmdale, second by Dr. K. Mack. All in favor? The recommendation, show a right hand. All opposed, like sign, there are none, so the motion carries six zero. Thank you. Our last business action item will be to consider, if appropriate, approved contract for category two services and for the classes. We have.
All right, guys. In accordance with the CNT local policy, the board approved this meeting to purchase goods and services greater than $50,000. The district recently solicited a call move to category two E-rate services, and we to spend the remaining balance of $45,600. The district received proposals from three different vendors. Attached is one of the copies following the, was win-dead by a company called NetSync. The goods and services exceeded $50,000, so it came to $53,654 in grossing one-year option. Some of the equipment is licensed for one year. So you've got to renew small portion of that, that can come out. that, and that can come out of my budget. Uh, but the contract provides purchasing and installation of network switches, UPSs, uh, for the four instructional campuses, uh, based on the funding available. This was, uh, based on the free reduced lunch for the district, and so with E-rate, they pay based on that eighty-five percent of the cost, and the district has to pay the fifteen percent remaining, which is about eight thousand, forty-eight dollars. So the law requires to move forward, and we have to have the board to approve, and, administration recommends approval of the Net Sync, you make a contract for category two services in the amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
We have a recommendation from administration to approve the contract of Net Sync for E-rate, E-rated eligible category two services in the amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. K. Mac, second, if I'm correct, any discussion? If none, all in favor, show a right hand. All opposed, like sign, there are none, that one carries zero. Thank you. With that, we move into our announcements and reports. I have the board president's report with that, Superintendent Dennis' report, and information, Dr. Benson.
Uh, well, I actually want to recognize, uh, Ms. Becky Pickering. Uh, she was selected to receive the two thousand nineteen Rio Excellence in Education Award. So on behalf of the Beaumont Foundation Board of Directors and Staff, she will be recognized with several others throughout this region, uh, Tuesday, May seventh, and of course, uh, I'll be there at La Moraine University Campus. Um, if you know anything about this Rio Excellence in Education, it's a very prestigious award, um, and one thing that's, uh, like I always say, is a huge perk, that the winner gets ten thousand dollars in cash with no, with no strings attached. Typically, when you see some people win something like that, they have to spend it on education items, or something like that. It's one of the few awards that, that, you know, it's actually for the benefit of the person who received the award, so we're very fortunate to have, uh, Ms. Pickering as one of our math teachers, um, former student, uh, does an excellent job, and this is a well-deserved recognition. Uh, in addition, I did send the board the information that we also received another grant through the, uh, Temple Foundation, as well as the Aspen Institute Opportunity Uniform, and this is looking at these sixteen to twenty-four, what they call at-risk youth, um, the ones that are not in school or in college, and we're trying to do a better job to make sure we address those, the needs of, uh, those students, uh, so that they can either get them into the workforce, or we can get them back to school. So we're excited about, uh, those opportunities. So, um, Temple Foundation has been really great, uh, reaching out to us to want us to be involved in a lot of things, and so we're, we're definitely grateful for them, and that's it.
Thank you. Information, reservations, or comments?
Yes, uh, we have on there the one sort of listed, uh, this is all in this.
Our next item will be. Campaign report, Mr. Davis.
Uh, good evening. So, I'll present, uh, Cornell Elementary, thus far, so about semester and a half, ten more weeks left of instruction before we release first summer, so that's always a good thing. Uh, what great things are happening at Cornell? On February twenty-eighth, we hosted a literacy night. We had great academic sessions where parents and students can learn about reading and writing skills. Uh, the event was sponsored by Chief Three Thousand, and we gave away book series and two nooks that were donated by Chief Three Thousand. Uh, I think we had a pretty good, for the first time doing it, we had a pretty good draw of pairs that came out, I think they all had a good time, uh, we were able to serve them a little light dinner, and I think the students were excited about not only the nooks, but we've been trying to do book series, uh, for attendance and different rewards, so still pushing that literacy, pushing the academics. Uh, on March first, students participated in Rio Cross America Day. Uh, goal for the campus was fifteen hundred A R points, that's about five points for each kid. Uh, we actually reached one thousand five hundred and twenty-one A R points. Uh, as motivation for every five points that the students read and earned, they get to dunk, Mr. Davis, during Field Day. So last year, Mr. Vickers and I had a competition, which I think we both won, um, where we got taken to the wall, and I told them this year I would not get taken to the wall because I'm a class reporter, and, uh, that was very uncomfortable. And so I said, I'll do something different, and I, I guess my bright idea was a dunking move.
What they gonna dunk in? Up the game, what they gonna dunk in?
Up the water.
Oh, okay.
I'm not that adventurous. You know, some people do the slime on it, and I'll, I'll just, just water. Um, so, uh, we talked about doing that during Field Day, kind of, uh, as a halftime event for the students, kind of break up Field Days a little bit, but they were motivated, and a lot of them said, I'm going to dunk it, uh, and I'm getting as many points as I can. So we had something that got like twenty-two, twenty-three points, so that was a job well done, um, for the students. Uh, students and staff participated in dressing like their favorite book character as well, so we have a picture of one of our teachers, couldn't tell you who she was, but, uh, everybody was all excited, they called her, she looks like a witch, I guess, because she had an all-black, um, then we had some students reading, so they had an opportunity to read alone, read to them, to each other. Uh, teachers were encouraged to read to the students as well, uh, to feel some of that fluency and just work with the kids. Uh, honor roll celebrations, so during the fourth, six weeks, we recognized eleven students on the A honor roll in fourth grade and forty-six students on the A B honor roll. Uh, for fifth grade, we recognized nineteen students on the A honor roll and fifty-five students on the A B honor roll, so that's a good, uh, recognition for the students. We get their picture put in the Jasper Newsboy, and they love to come into the cafeteria and have their picture taken, and, uh, we try to make sure all the kids are there. I know sometimes when we post on Facebook, some kids always missing them fail, um, and so we try our hardest, and I do deal with this, to get them all in there. Uh, data, data, data everywhere. So teachers completed an exercise of moving their students based on their map data. Uh, we had some celebrations as well as some discussions. So in, at Cornell, we have, uh, our P O C room, kind of those as a conference room, but on the other side, there's a data wall, and so at the beginning of the year, we put the students up based off their map quadrant, uh, you have low achievement, low growth, uh, low achievement, high growth, high achievement, low growth, and then high achievement, high growth, and of course, you want every kid that had high achievement, high growth, um, but the, the task was to, when they did their middle-of-the-year assessment, you go in, update their information, and you move those students. So you never want to see a student go down, you never stress it on, you never want to see a kid go from high achievement, high growth, to maybe, um, low achievement, low growth, because apparently that was, that's an issue, and so we did have some students that might have moved from high achievement, high growth, to high achievement, low growth, but it was especially good to see those teachers smile when they moved a kid from low achievement, low growth, to low achievement, high growth, because at the end of the day, that kid is still growing, and so it kind of goes back to the ad, because everybody's running a race on their own time, and so just to see a kid grow and celebrate those positives, that was awesome to do with the staff. Uh, based on the data, we kind of revamped our bulldog, we get to serve every teacher to get their input on some, uh, some, some good things we had going on, some things we needed to adjust, and so we started, you know, trying to get on that targeted, specific feedback and, uh, specific skills for the individual students, so making sure that whatever that student needed, that's what we're attacking, so that we can see that growth, and potentially, we should see more of those kids that are low achievement, low growth, move up, even though it's high achievement, low growth, kids should be moving up to high achievement, high growth. Uh, so the areas of focus is what we looked at in math, we, uh, individualized the instruction, and then we're going to assess each of the students once every four weeks to make sure that they're mastering the skills that we're providing during intervention, and that was one of the things the teachers talked about, was, uh, making sure that the students mastered that skill, we're, we're able to move them on toward other skills. Uh, the weeks prior to spring break, fourth and fifth grade students participated in T E A's interim assessments in math and reading. These assessments provide data on how students are predicted to perform on STAR. And so that was a, a neat experience, uh, it was all online, so that was different for a lot of kids, uh, it was different for myself, because I walked in one time and the computer screen was red, and I didn't know what was going on. Uh, so apparently they can change colors, and that excited some of the kids, uh, to change the, the layout of the screen. So we did, um, I spent some time right before spring break, there's some information I wanted to get to, that I just didn't have the time, but we wanted to do a comparison of our math prediction with what the interim assessment was predicting, uh, to see if there was a correlation, see if there was some spot-on instances, and see, um, if there was some places where there was some, maybe some concerns from what math was telling us and what interim said, uh, talking to Dr. Hudson, talking to Ms. Carter, Ms. Williams, there's areas where we hope that we come out in the math predictions, and then there's some areas where we're hoping the interim was correct. Um, so when we're looking at fourth grade math, we got forty-seven point seven did not meet, uh, thirty-six point four at approaches, ten point six at masters, and five point three at masters for math, but then when we move over to the interim assessment, we see that the did not meets drops down to forty-three point six two, so that's good, got less kids not meeting, uh, fifty-six point three seven percent approaches, uh, eighteen point seven nine percent at meets, and then two point six eight percent at masters. So that's one of those instances where if I could take the math masters and put it over there with the interim, I'd be happy. Um, same thing for, for his fifth grade math, forty point four, uh, went up to, we had a little difference there, forty-seven point nine, then we had thirty-nine point two percent at approaches, and then jumped up to fifty-two point zero nine, thirteen point five percent at meets, jumped up to nineteen point seven six, and then seven percent at masters, and it's jumped up to eight point three eight percent, and so I think that's a testament again to the teachers and what they're doing in the classroom. Uh, let me do one highlight for you. Uh, fourth grade reading, um, when we did math, we're saying thirty-five point eight per, eighty-five percent did not meet, well, over here on, uh, interim assessment, twenty-six point nine percent, we're looking at forty point four percent at approaches, jumps up to seventy point three four, uh, mass, the meets is eighteen point five, that jumps up to twenty-eight point nine seven, and then masters five point three percent, jumps up to nine point six six, and I can tell you that those fourth grade readers are working hard, they're, they're working hard, so that's, that's some good things, some, some growth, some highlights we had from them doing those interim sessions, which I was really pleased with. Uh, goals update, so, uh, again, the goals we have for the campus are based off of the board goals that were created this summer. Uh, one of the math goals is eight percent of all students with special emphasis on African-American and special education students will meet their expected math growth in math by the end of the year. So right now, we got forty percent of all students are, have met their growth from B O Y to M O Y, uh, thirty-seven percent of African-American students met their growth, and then forty-eight percent of special education students met their growth, so we have some work to do. Um, but again, with that targeted intervention time, target skills during their tier-one instruction, we should see those gains as well. Reading, still same, eight percent of all, especially emphasis on African-American and special education students will meet their expected math growth by the end of the year. Right now, we're looking at forty-seven and a half of all students meeting their growth, forty-four percent of the African-American students are meeting their growth, and forty-two percent of special education students are meeting their growth. Uh, for our science goal, seven percent of all students with special emphasis on African-American and special education students will meet their expected math growth in science by the end of the year, so right now, fifty percent of all students are meeting their growth, forty-nine percent of African-Americans, and then forty-four and a half percent of special education students are meeting their growth. So, uh, how are we addressing our needs? Administrators are implementing observation and feedback cycles in an effort to provide every teacher with feedback on the instruction and working to get better. Uh, we've had Region Five come in, uh, math specialist, to work with the teachers, look at their instructional practices, provide professional development, and then we had one come, we had her come back a week before spring break to do a follow-up, walk through the classroom, see some of the things she had suggested they were actually implementing, and then any other ideas, and then that day she said she can even come back again. Um, uh, key words were free, which was used to my ears, it's because she wanted to see what work they would continue to do, so that's a good testament, I think, to what we're doing here, when we have Region Five, people who will come in and work with our teachers, who want to come in and, and work with our teachers to get better for our students. Uh, fourth grade students participated in a writing seminar to understand the components of the writing process for STAR writing. Uh, teachers are continuing implementation of college writing across the curriculum through their journal writing, we have E L A teachers using the focus correction areas for their essay writings and pinpoint student deficits in writing, and so they're still right now working on the writing process to make sure that our students are becoming better writers. That's all we have.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Our next item will be financial report, Dr. Benson.
Now, the financial reports include taking comparison of budget to actual based on the purchase, they, revenues received, and expenditure posted as, uh, March fifth, two thousand nineteen, for the month of February, two thousand nineteen, for all funds combined, adopted budget plus grant funds, and general funds, community fund, one nine nine. Listed below, I mean, on the next page, you have the actual, um, financial.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Benson. There being no other business or action items, and there being no reason to go into closed session, I'll only hang a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So I can do everybody motion for the context where.